Oh my.
College, you're in place for a meeting to order. First order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everyone and thank you for coming tonight. Back to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to remove item D from the consent agenda. Closing the road for habitat for humanity. It's no longer requested.
I'll second that.
The motion is second to move item B, which is the request to close Sixth Street Southwest. Any discussion? On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move to approving the consent agenda, which includes a request to approve the May seventeenth regular council meeting. Request to approve May twenty-sixth special council meeting. The request to serve alcohol during private event at the Creamery on July third. From Tyler and Nicole Otten. Request to consume alcohol during the pool party in August. And a request to approve the Aquatic Center manager wage increase. To have a motion approved the consent agenda.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
You have a second?
I'll second.
On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Public input. Would like to publicly recognize Braden Schaefer, Dalton Black, and Torrance Weisberger. They were part of the first class of the Explorer Program at Pine Island Fire Department. They all met key requirements to graduate high school. And they will now be moving into the next phase, which is working through the application program to get onto the general roster. So I want to take a moment and recognize and thank them. We will move on to administration, which is item A. Resolution twenty-two dash two-seven approving COP for the Good News Evangelist Church. They were here last month. And we made some. We have made some requests just to tie up some loose ends. Elizabeth, are you willing to?
Yeah.
Touch on there.
So I wasn't able to meet with the church and we discussed the site plan. I know that was last month when we discussed, we weren't really sure what was going to happen. There aren't going to be any structural changes. It sounds like anything that is changed is just renovations inside the building. So they aren't making any changes to building or adding any buildings as of now. So currently they are very close to me already meeting the parking requirements for their maximum capacity. It doesn't sound like they their current attendance meet that maximum capacity anyways. So I feel very comfortable with their parking situation and lighting and things of that nature. So the fact that none of the buildings are changing the that they won't be adding anything or changing any of the parking. I do feel comfortable to recommend approval of COP.
They like Elizabeth said with, there's not going to be any issue with traffic hindrance or anything like that on County Road eleven. So.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of twenty-two, twenty-seven.
I'll second.
A motion is second through approve resolution twenty-two dash twenty-seven. For the Good News Evangelist Church. Any further discussion? Want to thank you all for your patience on that and working with Elizabeth and getting those consensus tied up, so appreciate it. And congratulations. On that, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item B, resolution twenty-two dash three zero, establishing the deputy city administrator position. This is something that came about here in the last month. I'll let Elizabeth introduce that and then we can have discussion if you'd like counsel.
So at our last special council meeting approximately two and a half weeks ago, I discussed with city council about the future of the open communications position. It was my recommendation that we change that a little bit. So when we created that position, we said we would kind of work through it and that we would kind of assess it. When, when the time was right, I felt that this time was right. And so it was my recommendation to bring in some more administrative staff and combine that with the communications job responsibilities so that we actually have another person in city hall just to help with the day-to-day work, especially with the license bureau moving into another building. That leaves us essentially two people short in city halls. So this would add a physical body at city hall to help us assist residents with their needs. And then in addition, they would take over some of those communications responsibilities. One thing that we have kind of had lacking in the past too, was someone who can answer questions and kind of take responsibility in my absence. Currently, there really isn't anybody who can kind of make those administrative decisions. And so this would make it easier for me to take vacation and have some.
But you're not allowed to have days off.
So. So I am asking council to approve a deputy city administrator position. I did quite a bit of research and there are a fair amount of other small towns that do have a similar position. Just to be able to take on those day-to-day functions. I'm hoping that we can, as you know, I'm trying to stay involved with all of our boards and commissions in the city and attend all those meetings. I'm hoping that we can kind of split those up with this position and yeah.
Do we have a salary range?
Yep, so the communications director position was at a pay grade eight, which was starting at forty-seven thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars and topping out at sixty-three nine hundred seventy-nine dollars. It'd be my recommendation to make this a pay grade nine. So move that up a pay grade. So starting or the pay grade would be anywhere from fifty thousand one hundred twenty-six dollars all the way up to sixty-seven thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars. It'd be my recommendation to move that up a grade. We can see where applications come in. And obviously, we can hire based on of the experience.
How soon would you like to post this?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
One, I think an important note too, Elizabeth was touching on. When you're looking at communities similar in size, we're, we're on track here to, you know, we're not in the too distant future. We're going to be hitting that, potentially hitting that five to six thousand.
Easily.
Population number and what I like about this is it was, we took the communication director's position. We tried it out. Took positives and the negatives with that, what worked, what didn't work. And, and are going to be able to incorporate some of that into this role and get ahead of the curve and allow city hall to function. As you know, we're going to be expanding into that building next door. And this feels like a wise, a wise move at this timing and get that in place before get, you know, caught off track, so.
In addition to resolution twenty-two dash thirty, do you also need us to make a motion to actually post the position as well?
You don't have to, you can, but I would, we would set forth then. I can post it and then take interviews to the personnel committee and then council would have to ultimately approve a final candidate.
Okay, I'll move approval of resolution twenty-two dash thirty and direct city staff to post the job opening as soon as feasible.
I'll second.
A motion is second and it's council, are, were you, were you comfortable with the job description that was in the packet?
Yeah, and I have a quick question that I'll add. It's understandable, obviously, staff at city hall is overwhelmed. I'm very excited to see the supportive system come in. I really look forward to the department reports and the end of the packet every month as well. I'm assuming that this position will have reports, just like the communications director position did. I'm glad that we were able to have a trial period of the communications position and better understand the needs or what fits our city.
In regards to job description question that you posed, Mr. Mayor, it looks like a lot. I mean, I realize I'm guessing that you and this person will be splitting these duties. Because I mean, it looks like all the same stuff you're doing too, so. They're going to be busy and hopefully they can take some of that load off you.
All right, council, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you for getting that description together. I, I'm excited for this. I think it's going to be a good move, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving on to item C, which is approving the New Haven Road Agreement. We had a special council meeting here a couple of weeks ago with the New Haven Town Board. Both learned a lot. Are we sitting?
So I'll just give an update. Everything is fine with the agreement. The guts of the agreements are both New Haven Township and the city are still in agreement with everything that happened at the special meeting. It's my understanding, there's a little bit of miscommunication on just the annexation portion. Not even whether or not the city will annex the road, but how that annexation process is going to be done. So I'm not worried about the agreement. We are working through it with the township's attorney and then as well. So we don't have anything before you tonight, but we'll get that worked out so that we can either bring back an amendment to their agreement at their next township meeting in two weeks. So then we can then vote on the final agreement in July. So like I said though, there's not, there's an understanding on the agreement that was made that night. It's just on the process of the annexation.
Methodology, so we're good? You're comfortable with us approving? What's here tonight?
Well, I wouldn't approve anything tonight. I'll bring something back in July.
So I'll make a motion to table it?
Yes, please.
So moved, motion table.
Second, a motion and a second.
Did you say their next meeting is the first week of July?
No, their township board meeting is the second Tuesday.
Oh, okay, yep.
So we can, if we come to an agreement on the exact terminology to be used in the agreement, they can vote on it first and then it would come to us or vice versa, so.
Right, okay, that makes sense, thank you.
All right, motion is second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thanks for your help with that.
Yeah.
All right, we're going to move on to item B. This will be a public hearing for the petition for annexation of land in Pine Island Township, which is going to be the property north of the Walters House. We'll take a motion, open.
Move to open the public hearing.
Motion is second.
Second.
On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is open. This is, like I said, this is going to be that land. It's like a triangle shaped piece of land that is north of the Walters property. We had a discussion here a couple of weeks ago about the that large field that's down by LP Collision. Anything special that we want to introduce? Otherwise, Mr. Steele is here as well. If you have any questions regarding that piece of property, what its intended use is for?
I guess I would like to know what the intended use and master plan for that property is, given the light industrial and commercial businesses that surround it.
I would think it will be highway commercial. I don't think it'll be industrial. I don't think it'll be anything disruptive. I think it would be small businesses, maybe a larger business.
I've heard townhomes floated, that's a concern.
Townhomes are going to go on the four point six eight. That, that is going to happen.
Where, sorry? Well, sort of.
A little bit later, yeah.
Maybe it's just later in the packet, okay? Do you see any concern with having townhomes that near to a business such as Mr. Cocker's or anything else that could be in there if it's light industrial highway, commercial, a body shop? Are we, are we opening up a can of worms with bringing in residential homes? People want quiet and silence and there's big business going on, trucks going in and out. I want them.
Just to confirm, so this public hearing is just for the annexation of, of the northern first park?
Right, I would just say this, Jonathan, I, I can show you numerous examples of residential that brought some to commercial. I mean, they're just all over the place. We've got it, I mean, or northeast, we've got, I mean, we got it all over the town. I, I think this will be a quiet little twin home subdivision, sixteen units. Will probably plant some trees. I think it will be up to the, and as far as the use on the rest of that property, it's wide open.
Good.
But I would think it, it wouldn't be the owners wish to have anything disruptive. They don't want a concrete plant or they just don't want something like that. They would want something that would be homogenous with the businesses that are across the level. You know, those are just quiet little businesses, so.
Okay.
Anybody else with public input? Otherwise, I'll take the motion to close of the public hearing.
So, second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, that closes the public hearing portion for the annexation of the land, this chunk of land. We'll move into item E, which, or it is one sixty, which is approving the annexation of land in Pine Island Township. And again, this is pertaining strictly to that triangle that is north of the Walters homestead there. Right along Highway fifty-two.
Mayor, just one comment. So this is a request. Your administrator talked about the, the agreement with the township for annexation of different land that we would do by amending an agreement with that township and do it under that agreement. This is the other way that's in front of us now, the city's maniacs land. We can do it by ordinance as well. There's not an agreement with the township. And to do that, there are certain findings that the city has to make. There are certain facts that we have to conclude exist. And you see that the, the owner of the property, owners of the property petitioned you for annexation by ordinance. And in that petition, they represent to you, they say to you all of the things that need to be said in order for a city to do annexation by ordinance. Most prominently is that the land is going to be developed, that the development calls for water and sewer and the land doesn't currently have water and sewer. And that's the, that's the linchpin, that's the key conclusion you have to reach. We have to annex by ordinance, but the other, the other conclusions are in that petition as well. So since he didn't have any testimony in the public hearing, contrary to that, you, you can conclude that all the conditions exist in light of to do this.
Any question, council? The rights will take that motion. Does he get a motion in a second for the ordinance?
I don't think so, just to hear and I'll make a motion to approve ordinance one sixty.
Second.
Second. This has been a long time working with this area of our community, so this is nice to see it moving forward. So.
And we know there's a housing need right now.
There is. All right, council, we have motion second, all in favor of ordinance one sixty, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Steele, for your work on that too. We're going to move on to the feasibility report for the twenty twenty-three street project. This is going to be that hopefully, if everything goes well, Fourth Street Southwest area, you got a map in front of you. Pretty colors, explaining some different areas. So Craig, are you going to take it away?
Yes, Mayor, so Mayor Council, at the last meeting, they, we looked at the feasibility of Fourth Street Southwest. At that meeting, you asked us to take a look at cost of adding Kimberly Courts along the Second Avenue into the, into the project as well and what that does to the cost per foot for the residents and the overall project cost. So in the feasibility study, on page six, we added a table that kind of outlines the, the base project. So that would include everything that blew there, that Fourth Street Southwest and the avenues to the south connecting Fourth Street to Fifth Street. Kimberly Court to, we call that alternate one, that is a portion purple. And that's about six hundred and forty feet in length in total. Includes the avenue, Fourth Avenue from Fourth Street down to Fifth Street as well. And then we also looked at alternate two, adding the green portion or Second Avenue from Fourth Street to Third Street. We reviewed the sewer tapes that were, that were videoed here earlier. Second Avenue is in, is in pretty tough shape. It is, it's got some cracking, one to two no transverse cracks along with some just chunks of pipe missing here and there. So pretty consistent with the older portions of town that we saw with, with the condition of that. Kimberly Court, the underground wasn't in as bad a shape. That looked to be pretty decent overall. We did look at both scenarios, the total reconstruction project. So looking at replacing the sewer water, all the under ground along with the surfacing items too. So the table on, on page six kind of outlines what the base project with the alternate one or Kimberly Court would, would be. And Kimberly Court would add about six hundred eighty thousand dollars to the project. And and because of the kind of some of the efficiencies being with, with the frontage extra being on Kimberly Court, it drops the overall front yard cost from around one hundred eighty dollars per foot for the residents with just the basic project. Then looking at base and alternate, it drops it to about one hundred and seventy-one dollars per foot. Then looking at base bid and alternate two, so that portion of Second Avenue would be reconstructed. Again, because those properties generally run on Second Avenue. That, that cost per foot or that project cost is about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that's for about four hundred and forty feet of street reconstruction. And that drops it from one hundred and eighty dollars per foot down to about one hundred and sixty-three dollars a foot for, for the residents. One scenario that's not shown on here is the base that alternates one and two. So I'll just give you those numbers as well. That, that ends up being about a three point four five million dollar, just shy of three and a half million dollar project. That so the assessments, the owner, to the property owners would be approximately nine hundred thousand. So they pick up about twenty-six percent of the project. And that drops from the base that an alternate, which was around one hundred and sixty-three and a half dollars per foot, it drops it to about one hundred and fifty-nine dollars per foot. So again, the overall cost to individual residents would go down some, but obviously, that's a, that's a substantial project. So so I talked to Todd a little bit about it once we got the, got the results. I think there's some things that we'd want to talk about and include Mike Babani in to take a look at the financial piece of it as well. But this is for those of us that we were coming up with and questions that we have to answer.
It seems logical if we could afford it, if we can scale it up and bring the cost per foot down and get the project completed in a timely manner. It would seem to make sense to one, two, and three altogether. Todd, would you agree? You think it's possible to get that much done or is it too, too ambitious?
They need it done.
I mean, we have time, time is on our side, so it's not like we have to.
Especially regardless of knowing this is our last, our last major roadway in town to get with the Spreach Street project that was started how many years ago?
We still got Third Street.
Yeah, like the major. And, you know, listening to homeowners along that road asking for, for the project to get done. Like Todd said, with being able to talk to Mike and see how we can configure it financially. Because I agree with JP on if, if, if things work in our favor, being able to bite the bullet and get those two additional projects included would be ideal.
Then I guess the question becomes, once we're down to just First Avenue and Third Street, are we going to then unfairly, you know, cause that to go up higher by lineal foot? Because we can't get that economy of scale. I guess there's two ways to look at that.
You said the Underground to Kimberly Court is decent? Did we explore the option? There's not an estimate for the base and an alt two? Or?
Yep, so the base and alternate two are in the far right column on page six.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, yeah.
We just didn't have a column for.
All of them combined, okay, okay.
So, so it is in there. I, I think in looking at some of the elevations and that in Kimberly Court, we would likely, it, it's pretty well of a horizontal or a vertical alignment, so it's, it's really, whoever knows what they're.
Okay.
But it's, so we would probably end up dropping some of that elevation, which we have to lower the water main and everything. That's why we, we just included it as a total reconstruction.
Rather than grind and overlay.
Right, right, that makes sense, okay.
Are we looking to approve the feasibility report tonight? Then it's not approving the project, so.
Correct, so this would just be accepting the feasibility report, which is essentially providing council with an estimate on the street project. So there'd still be many more steps in the project. Like when we would have advertisement for bids, that's when we can choose which alternate we would advertise for at that time.
I'll make a motion to approve the feasibility report.
Second.
A motion and a second, council. Thank you, Greg. Greg's got one more thing.
Yeah, one thing, so with this, we wouldn't have a resolution for you to do this instead of the motion to do it. So I don't, but we didn't do that just because we don't know exactly what that, what we want to present to the public. Because the next step will need to have that initial public hearing with, with the public. So with all the residents invited. So I guess our thought on the timeline would be to get some direction from council on what you want to, what you'd like to tackle or what you'd like to see for a project. Probably talk to Mike Babani and then bring it back for, for approval next month. And then at that time, then we could set that public hearing date for August. And that would still give us time to get, to get it designed enough to do it if we decide a new project. So, so yeah, I think direction from council would be.
And when you talk about economy of scale, because of how far apart they are, does it not make as much sense to do base and alternate two and then down the road? Do a third, first, and Kimberly? Is that just nonsensical to space it apart like that?
No, I think with what would be remaining, which would be First Avenue, Third Street, Pine Crest, and then two blocks, you have the Fourth Avenue. That's still a pretty healthy project.
On its own, okay.
I think that's, yeah, on its own. So I, I, I think it must really differently, Todd. That's how we probably present, you know, a future project in twenty-four or twenty-five or whatever. Get to that point, so that, that's still a decent, decent sized project.
Yeah, I didn't realize that that stretch of Second Avenue was in that bad of condition. So obviously, that's something that needs to be prioritized.
Yeah, the alternates number one and two aren't, weren't prioritized, like our priorities is just.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
You're right.
I know he's not here tonight, but I did talk with council member Hilton Brandon about this. I know he had spoken with Craig, I believe, while discussing this further. He, he was in agreement to do the base and either both alternates or alternate two. So if there was an alternate to be left off, he was in favor of having Kimberly Court alternate one be the project that wins, so. He knows that he doesn't have a vote tonight.
So we're waiting for, to talk with Mr. Babani. Are you looking for us to give you a direction on which plan to go with, you know, for feasibility tonight?
I think so, and that, and that could, that direction could be look at, look at all scenarios too. So we don't have to exclude anything because we're not starting the plans and respects or anything like that. Gives you a little more time to, you know, review the numbers with staff.
I think it'd be prudent to look at everything, base, alternate one and alternate two. And if Babani goes, eh, no, then we back it off. And then let's just look at harder numbers too. If we go, okay, it's a hundred and fifty-nine dollars a square, or a lineal foot versus a hundred and sixty-three, that gets us real numbers to work with.
We can do that.
Right, council, you have one way or another, you want to make a motion on for Craig?
I guess I'll make a motion to direct city staff to engage with our financier, taking a look at the base bid plus alternate one and alternate two.
Second, I have a motion in a second to direct city staff to work with Mr. Babani and look at our numbers for base, base project with alternate one and two. Any further discussions? On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, Greg. Near stuff for discussion, as we move on to planning commission, this is resolution twenty-two dash thirty-one. Near stuff for discussion as we move on to planning commission. This is resolution twenty two dash thirty one preliminary plat for the Pine Island Business Plan. This is out by Opportunity Drive. An area that we are seeing some movement going on.
So yeah, this is uh we had a um public hearing at the planning commission here tonight at six o'clock. Uh and uh there was public comment taken from the applicants represented, you know, the public. Members of the public were here to speak about the project, but this is a but we did receive a preliminary plat application from Pierce Properties too. Uh they are the owners of the property that's showing in red though. The uh so this is right along Opportunity Drive, which is which is the old Bioscience Drive. It's the southern part of the twentieth streets down to Highway sixty two there. And they're proposing to uh plant that area in red. Um originally, there was a plant to establish the right of way for uh again, old Bioscience Drive. And then the outlots on the west side of the property, which is a pond, a stormwater pond right now. And there's one parcel that was planted um just to the east and the south of the pond. So that was a plant that was previously approved and recorded. And uh so that that exists, what they're looking at doing now is subdividing the the area in red into seventeen different commercial lots. And um and so uh they submitted a plant. We had a uh some review comments that we asked them to address. Um some of them deal with drainage, just ensuring that we have enough area because like it's really low on that east portion of the property in the northeast corner. Uh so we just want to make sure that we have adequate room for easements for the uh stormwater ponds. Uh we also want to ask them to take a look at how they're doing the service, lots two and three or block one and two. With sewer sewer water services, because those are set back from Opportunity Drive. Uh there's a row of lots in front of them. So they did have utility access easements, but we don't know how the grading will work there exactly. Uh and then also we asked them to take a look at some of the related um and how this would be how this uh problem will be graded in the future, once it develops. They're not proposing any grading at this time, so they're not coming in and masquerade these and get these pad ready, but uh they're just looking to establish establish. So we had a number of uh comments. Um the planning commission did recommend approval of the plant with the conditions that we had outlined. Um one other thing I would like to to bring up that um Bob and I spoke before this meeting here about about the possibility of vacating the existing right of way. Um and that could be done because if there's any discrepancy in the survey, there won't be overlapping uh right of ways or anything like that for Opportunity Drive. So we could do that with the final plant process as well. We could bring that forward uh with a with a final plats and then also a vacation request uh by the by the applicants. That are there? There any questions at all from you?
What I I guess like what they touched on during P and Z tonight was you're looking at some of these uh the lots and what we're looking at for plating tonight. And it's going to be an opportunity for some of these businesses that are looking to move. Uh this will help establish that ability for them to move into town. Uh you got different sized lots that are going on, you know, which is going to be ideal. So uh it's nice to see this moving forward. Uh and like Craig said, the P and Z commission committee, they they approved with with those they had different couple of different
Yeah, the condition.
Conditions on, so on their, you know, I'm in favor of it, so.
I'll move approval, resolution twenty two dash thirty one.
I'll second.
A motion in a second. And then Craig, what you're saying with the with vacating that right away, is that something you're able to you you bring with the final flash that?
Right. Yep. So we'll we'll work through the uh or we'll have the applicant work through the uh conditions that are outlined in the resolution. And now we're working with Bob and his team to.
Mayor, if I could just one comment about the uh the motion to approve uh the resolution that's in front of you. And as Craig said, he and I talked about this um prior to the meeting. So you will see that your approval uh that it looks like you're headed to to taking here uh is conditional, right? There are conditions that uh additional information has to be submitted. I guess I would point you at paragraph two in particular which says a new drawing, a new preliminary plat map has to be supplied with a bunch of additional information on it. That's fine. It's implied, but let's just make a record of it, which is what I'm doing now. It's implied that all that information has to be acceptable, right? I mean, that it has to be correct, it has to be right, um it has to be approved by Craig. So that's obviously implicit in requiring that that additional information be supplied, but that is part of this resolution.
Would you like me to say that uh move to approve twenty two thirty one with conditions?
That that's fine, and and the conditions are in the resolution. It's just I want to make it clear that for example, let me just be super specific, you know, one of the conditions here in two uh D is a preliminary layout of the sewer and water services um to the two lots that Craig was talking about. Well, there's probably a correct way to do that and a not correct way to do that, and so it's going to have to be done correctly in Craig's opinion. It has to be shown correctly, in other words, on the mapping. Uh and if it's not right, we're going to have to send it back and ask for it to be resubmitted. So I don't think you need to change the motion. I don't think we need to change the resolution. I just want to make it clear. All this stuff that has to be supplied has to be right, it has to be correct. Okay.
So the condition two F, there's only four flats that aren't butted up to the road? Or? Yeah, okay. Yep.
Yeah. So in just so you know, the the uh subdivision wasn't originally laid out like this. There are a lot more lots now. Uh so in order to provide service to each of these lots.
Yeah.
They're going to have to go all over the streets and and tap into the main lines to stuff services out. So we would have some some patches of that in the street, but but that's that would be handled with, you know, any construction of the with the.
Thirty-three foot wides were uh roads wide enough for us, Todd? Be able to plow them? Can't remember what a standard road is. To so to access those two lots that are buried off of Opportunity Drive, is that going to be a private road that goes back in there? That'd be private. So it could be four different businesses and they will have to share the expense to maintain that private road, not us. That's where I was trying to get to, I guess. Sorry.
Yeah. Yeah. That's a good good point, Todd. Because in in that's one of the conditions too, like lots over there, but um those easements just so they cover and then those um those lot owners get into their lots without crossing over other lots. We're just asking them to extend that into the lots. And and that could be done, there could be a parking lot that that access takes place in, but it's just deserving that those would be.
Gotcha.
That's why it's outlined or that's um kind of depicted as a with a document number there.
Yeah.
Because that access wouldn't be covered.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
So again, there's only four that don't directly abut the road. On the, I think that's the west side, five and six that are long and skinny. What's that section on top or behind of them? Or should it go all the way back?
Um so five and six over on the.
Block one, five and six.
Yeah. Yep. So.
Oh, those do go all the way back.
Looks like it's a hundred and fifty foot drainage easement.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Right. So it's currently a lot A is is planned to be in a lot for uh a drainage and utility purposes. That lot may be reconfigured and talking to the applicants representative, but um but right now that hundred and fifty foot drainage and utility easement on the east side of lots five and six will be conveyed to stormwater. But those those are the sort of details. We just want to make sure that if they give us a preliminary grading plan, some of the preliminary calculations, then then we can ensure that um adequate easements for that.
Right, right. So once development does start, are you anticipating driveways coming out from each of the lot? Or I guess my ultimate concern is there like traffic congestion concern issues with how next to each other they all are?
Um they still have close to like the skinny lots are about a hundred and fifteen foot of frontage, so.
Oh, good.
So you know, that spacing would be, you know, theoretically, if it's in the center of the hundred and fifteen feet of separation in between them. So and and some of them may be sold together. So for instance, lot three, you know, if they find a buyer for lots, I don't want to speak for that. But uh from what the representative told us, lots one, two, and three, if they need that much room, they're going to sell those together.
Okay.
One or two access points there.
Right.
But yeah, the idea would every every lot here would have their own direct access.
Right. And they're spaced enough apart that it's not a traffic congestion type concern?
Correct, correct. Because they're skinny enough lots where we know that it's not going to be, say, retail or or.
Right. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, good question.
Yeah.
Right, council, we had a motion in a second, some discussion. If further, we'll take the motion to approve resolution twenty two dash thirty one.
Think that was already made.
Favor signify by saying aye, sorry.
Aye.
I'll oppose.
We kept interrupting with questions.
All right, we're going to move on to public works and engineering. Anything else to add under that?
Where do we go? Zip that up. I got nothing. Move approval of claims.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to move on to departments. I'll invite our county commissioner, Jata Agressus. Welcome, sir.
Hello, everyone. How are you? Sorry, I had to leave last month and worked up there. Um don't have a lot to uh report. ARPA is still uh moving forward. We are getting some money, you know, spent. We did get our second check just this last two weeks. Um we did get our landfill into the those landfill site in state. Um I know there's always been some frustration as to how in the process that we went through, had to go through to do that, but we are uh it is now in the state's hands, which is it it was a bad spot. So.
Isn't it pretty common for landfills to like be operated locally or is the state slowly acquiring more and more?
I think more of them are going into the state. It it's uh years ago, you found the where the dump already was and you just you know, if some more planning would have been done forty years ago, we maybe wouldn't have had that issue and and if the county wouldn't have taken it over from Red Wing for a dollar, that would have been better also. So but that's this is the situation we're in and this is what we do now. So. Um anything for me, anything to?
Commissioner, did you have any, did you were you able to share any updates with like the radio?
I did talk, did talk today. Um we uh I I threw out a suggestion, maybe if we could at least get ten for each community. So that's kind of on the the dock of right now. I know that some communities have a lot more than others, but but that's just coming out of ARPA. But then the next step is if you know, if this doesn't get resolved and communities are still having problems, then we are going to have to look at it as a as a county budget, you know, an item. So and the comments came up, well, each individual organization should kind of take care of that themselves, which I can see part of that, but then I explained you know, pumper trucks are no longer quarter of a million dollars or seven hundred thousand, you know. So how do we expect our small towns to um keep up with all of these projects? So with OSHA coming down on us and each pumper has to meet the pumping capacities and there's uh there's just so many guidelines for us. Our turnouts have to go every ten years and now they're suggesting we have two sets of turnouts. So it's one's being watched. So it's the regulations are getting overwhelming for the small towns. Um and also our ambulance crews, you know, we got three ambulance departments in pretty towns and you know, they their radios also. So it's not dead yet, so but it's there's some still in the works.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Appreciate the help.
Absolutely. It's really exciting to see where Pine Island's going. You guys are, you know, you're moving. It's exciting. It's rocking right along. Yeah, yeah. All right.
Thank you, sir.
You got that onto the school again, though, brother.
Sure, that's already in the talk somewhere along the line, so.
It's been mentioned.
It's growing like crazy.
A good deal.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Rachel? Good evening.
Uh hi, I'm Rachel Gravesen. Oh, everyone who knows me, uh librarian here in town. Uh just wanted to highlight that summer reading is going on right now. Uh we are having a bumper crop, as I think I heard that term earlier, of signups for summer reading. We've I think exceeded our two thousand nineteen numbers. Um I think when I wrote my report on the ninth, we had two hundred and fifty-two uh people sign up, including myself, so kids, Anna Belts can all do this. Um I think we're close to I'm going to guess three hundred we're close to. Um so Heidi is being kept really, really busy, which I love. Um we've got programming Tuesdays uh with crafting and from ten to two. Wednesday's a storytime at ten and music and movement is on Fridays at ten as well. Most of those are taking place outside. Um although, of course, last two weeks we've been inside for crafting because the weather has not cooperated. Otherwise, the only other thing I have is the fact that we do still have a few book clubs. And we're doing really having a lot of fun with our books and brews that's brought south by southeast. That's the first Wednesday. Um and this next month's theme is uh summer beach reads. So come on by, have a drink and enjoy a conversation about books. Otherwise, we'll be reading um The Water Dancer for the regular book club that just discusses one book. That's the second week of the month right here at City Hall. So thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
It works. I'd just like to thank uh city staff, these best of the major department.
Very good year.
They rocked it.
Yeah.
And the people were really good too. I mean, people seem to be cleaning up after themselves.
I would, yeah, I venture guessing had to be close to record crowds at least. Excellent. A lot of visitors from all over town. It was fun. EDA, nothing from your end. Fire departments not here. Been busy, 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 busy month. Jen, do you have anything for us? Welcome again.
So the open house was a huge success. Um this week we have our Badges and Bobbers event on Friday. And then uh the next thing that we have coming up will be the Habitat Humanity Build on July ninth, which we are still looking for volunteers for. So that's open to the public to come and hang out with us. So I got.
Where's the badges and bobbers thing going? Is that Oscar?
It's in, no, it's at Everett's. It's actually in Wisconsin. Yeah.
Cheese line.
Yeah.
Wow.
Right across the river.
Rumor has it they have great beer too, to say it.
To be fair, right? Thank you, Jen. Anyone else? Any other information? Otherwise, we got council retreat coming up with a confirmed date here hopefully by tomorrow.
Hopefully after the meeting, I'll get a confirmed date.
That so that'll be good. I'm looking forward to that.
How about a motion to adjourn?
Want to do that motion?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.